God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, we worked with you. We got Robin to get a flag for us over here, so.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the November 7th, 2022 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Before we begin the business, there are a few other things. Could we please have a moment of silence for all those affected by wars and disasters? Okay, thank you. And on behalf of the Board and the townspeople, I would like to express our sympathy to the family of Dave Bonnicoe who passed away. Dave spent over 25 dedicated, plus dedicated years on the Conservation Commission, and we certainly appreciate everything he did for the town. Also, we would like to express our gratitude to all the veterans in town. If it weren't for veterans fighting for our country, we would not be sitting here at a table in a free country at a public meeting. Okay, and public service announcements, don't forget to vote tomorrow. The polls are open 6:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Jamie, do you have any?
No, I have none.
Mary?
That was beautifully said, and I agree with Dave, and God rest his soul and the veterans. So, thank you, Mary. I have no public... Oh, I do, I'm sorry, I have one public announcement. In honor of veterans, we're hosting the special events and the Veterans Agent. We're hosting a 5K on Saturday morning. You can walk or run. It's called Home of the Brave. We do have signs everywhere in town. Sadly, the print is really small, so it's really hard to read unless you're walking. But there's still time to register, and you can register by going on our website. There'll be a link directly there. At last count, we had about 140 people and 46 towns represented. So, we have a lot, and four states. So, quite a few people are going. I think the person singing the National Anthem may very well be the same one that sings it for the Boston Bruins. It's what our race director tells us. So, Home of the Brave on Saturday at 9:00.
So, are you running or walking?
Well, I'm gonna... I'm not... This... Got a little bit of a... Resting my hamstring, so I'm gonna be helping.
Well.
But I have been promoting it with my running friends. And the proceeds go to a veteran's families, veterans in the town of Sturbridge. Last year, $6,000 went back to the veterans, so.
Okay, very good. Jase?
I have nothing, thank you.
Ian?
I have none.
Okay, on the agenda, we will have the Town Administrator's Update. Then we have several action items. They're all consideration and possible action. Confirmation of the appointment of Rhonda Tetra as the Payroll and Benefits Coordinator in the Finance Department. Application made by LNL Hospitality LLC doing business as Comfort Inn for a pledge of collateral slash pledge of license from Savers Bank to Milford Bank. Vote authorize the Chair to execute the contract with Sherman and Friedrich Land Surveying and Engineering for requests for quotes for professional land surveying for the northerly line of 45 and Shampoo Road. To authorize the Chair to execute the contract with ESS Group in the amount of $75,000 for the alum treatment of South Pond. To accept a donation from Cornerstone Bank to the Recreation Department in the amount of $250 towards the cost of the DJ service at the annual tree lighting event on the Common Vicuula application for Deep Roots Distillery USA located at 559 Main Street, Unit 209, Fiskil. Accepting the resignation letter from Daniel Gervasi effective October 21st, 2022 from the Sturbridge Department of Public Works. Authorizing the Chair to sign the Public Health Excellence Shared Service Grant. Accept the letter of resignation from Stephen Chidester from the Conservation Commission. Reappointment of Roy Bishop and Eric Gaspar to the Conservation Commission for term to expire June 30th, 2025. Accept the letter of resignation from Sue Grandon from the Council on Aging. Transient vendor license for Keith Blakely for Country Folk Art Shows at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on Friday, November 25th, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Saturday, November 26th, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And Sunday, November 27th, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. To appoint Paula Copaz to the Sturbridge Lakes Association as the Lead Mine Lake Representative for a term to expire April 18th, 2023. Reappointment of Lee Darren to the Sturbridge Lakes Association as the Sea Lake Representative for a term to expire June 30th, 2025. Reappointment of Maria Tassi to the Sturbridge Lakes Association as the South Pond Representative for a term to expire June 30th, 2025. To appoint Debbie Steinberg to the Council on Aging for a term to expire June 19th, 2025. Old Business, New Business, Correspondence. We don't have minutes. And then Citizens Forum, and we will adjourn. So, Town Administrator's Update.
Yeah, very quickly, you have a road maintenance agreement in front of you that I have been working with on the Podunk Road involving the solar farm. It's a Charlton solar farm. However, National Grid needs access through a road that we had not maintained in the past. We will take on the maintenance for a sum of $20,000 a year for the first, I believe it's five years, and then an escalator after that for cost of maintenance. They are aware that if we maintain the road, it does become a public way. So, it does not become their private access. So, they are aware that it is a public way, and we've worked with our attorneys on that to ensure that they are aware of that. So, it's just informative for the Board. I don't necessarily believe you have to take action, or you may want to take a vote just to support it because it is going to become more public than it has been. So, I mean, it's your call if you want to vote on it, but.
Well, we probably should.
Yeah, and it's a street access, and as street commissioners, you probably should.
Right. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Did you negotiate this on our behalf? Like, who came up with the original contract?
So, it started when I came in, and then there had been this $20,000 sum being tossed around. And then Heather and I reviewed it, and Heather suggested that we look at an escalator for maintenance, but she is comfortable with this number. So, Heather and I worked with the solar people to finalize that number on the agreement.
Yeah, because it escalates 5% after the first five years.
And you could see the tracking, some of the changes as we work through it.
Right. Okay, somebody want to make a motion then? Let the Board support and sign.
I'll make a motion for the Board to support and sign the Road Maintenance Contribution Agreement between the Town of Sturbridge, Mass. and Sturbridge Road Solar Farm LLC.
Is there a second?
I'll second Jase's motion.
Discussion. All in favor?
Sealer of Ways and Measures. So, we talked about this. The state is raising the fee to $13,000 from the $5,300 we had budgeted and have done in the past. I talked to Southbridge. They have somebody coming on board. I don't think they're quite ready to add us on with a stipend, which would have been the easiest. Charlton does have someone who does it. I spoke with him. Based on his numbers, it's going to cost us probably at least $7,000 or $8,000 to have him, plus we don't have the equipment. So, the real issue here is about $70,000 or $80,000 worth of equipment that goes into this. I'm at this point thinking that I have until the end of the week to let the state know. I am thinking that maybe for at least the year, we continue with the state and we continue to look for options, maybe ARPA money to purchase the equipment, or different ways that we may look at purchasing that equipment so that then we can hire someone maybe for $7,000 a year. But in the end, if the purchase of the equipment is $70,000 or $80,000, and it's only going to cost us $7,000 more a year, it'd be 10 years before we even made up the difference. So, at this point, we may be a little bit over barrel, and I just want to inform you that I may make a recommendation. I'm going to have to talk to them before our next Board meeting, but I may have to at least let the Commonwealth know that we are likely to enter into an agreement, and then just go to FinCom for a transfer, if the Board's comfortable with that.
Woods, feelings, thoughts?
I mean, it seems like the circumstance you're in, or the margin you're in, there's nothing else to do.
I was hoping we could just do Southbridge if they had the equipment, and we could pay them $8,000 a year, $7,000, and just save a couple thousand, but.
But there's, you know, it's unfortunate, but there's a need of administration by just having the state.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay, thank you. And then, just as a quick thing, there had been a vote in 2019, and it regarded Christmas Eve, and it was basically that when the holiday fell on a Friday, because it's a half-day, that Town Hall would be closed the Thursday afternoon. And that made sense to me for Christmas Eve, because most people don't expect the Town Hall to be open at 4:00 necessarily, 3:00 on Christmas Eve. So, when Veterans Day coming, one of the employees said, "Yeah, we close a half-day on Thursday before." And I said, "Well, I'm a little concerned about that, because it's not what the minutes said when I look back." It reflected a Christmas discussion. On the other hand, the employees are supposed to get a whole day off. Friday's only a half-day. What I have suggested is that we will keep Town Hall open till 4:00. These buildings open till 4:00. People may choose to use that half-day then, or they may take it as a floating half-day within the next, within this paid period. That way, we at least keep Town Hall open to the public. It will maybe short-staff, because a lot of people are still going to choose to do the half-day Thursday. So, I will publicly put out that, you know, I suggest people call ahead of time to make sure whoever they're looking for is here. But if somebody at least wanders in, the doors are unlocked. There will be staff. I know there are people who will be planning on working in this building and Town Hall. So, if somebody comes in, at least they can leave a message for someone or take a message. I just was concerned about having the doors locked at 2:00 or 3:00 on November 10th, which is a normal business day for people. It's not a standard sort of, or presumed, holiday. And the Board, from what I see in the 19 minutes, it really was only in relationship to Christmas Eve.
Well, that's because.
It felt weird.
Yeah, well, Veterans Day moves.
Right, and because it fell on a Friday this year, and the same thing could happen, let's say, with the Fourth of July. But because it fell on a Friday, it created this weird half-day. I just wasn't comfortable closing Town Hall on a day that people presume businesses. So, it might be lightly, just for public notice, it might be lightly staffed, but the buildings will be open. So, I just wanted to inform everybody of that. And staff is on board. Obviously, public safety, those have full days anyway. They're standard. But it's for the staff that has the noon time Friday.
No, that makes sense. They do a half-day, but have a half-day on Thursday doesn't make sense to the residents.
No, and many people will take it at that time, but at least I know that I have staff in both buildings, that both doors will be unlocked. I have a couple people that are going to plan on working here. I have a few people who wanted to take a different... I have people who are taking tomorrow morning off instead, so it spreads it out.
So, not everybody's going to do...
No, not everybody. There will be people here. I know, like, my tax assessor's office will be fully staffed Thursday afternoon as normal. So, I at least know, and I know the clerk's probably going to be around with post-election. So, the first floor of Town Hall will probably be well-staffed. I know I've got a couple people working here in this building. So, if somebody comes in, even if, let's say, Nelson's office isn't open, I'm not sure that they are, but, you know, Becky's around Thursday afternoon to at least say to somebody, "Hey, nobody's here, what do you need?" And everybody will chip in. Okay?
Sounds reasonable.
And that's it from me.
Okay, so then we have the consideration on the appointment of Rhonda Tetra as the Payroll and Benefits Coordinator.
Ms. Tetra couldn't be here tonight, but Barbara has interviewed for a while for this position. She's done several interviews. We are pleased to bring this resume forward, and this came per the suggestion of Barbara Barry.
Okay, any questions, comments from the Board?
Just a comment that I'm glad if somebody is going to be there. Been there for three months.
Yes, it's been very hard to recruit. Very challenging, everywhere, yeah.
You know, in restaurants.
Yeah, it's awful right now.
I don't understand it. Okay, somebody want to make a motion then?
Sure. Yeah, go ahead. I'll move to confirm the appointment of Rhonda Tetra as Payroll and Benefits Coordinator in the Finance Department at a starting rate of $27.15 per hour.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay. Okay, next, we have the application by LNL Hospitality LLC doing business as Comfort Inn for a pledge of collateral slash pledge of license from Savers Bank to Milford Federal Bank. We have done this before for a few businesses that are remortgaging, refinancing. Questions?
Whether they're sending their liquor license as collateral or mortgage. Yeah. Me.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion then? To approve the application?
Sure, I will move to approve the application by LNL Hospitality LLC, DBA, Comfort Inn for a pledge of collateral pledge of license from Savers Bank to Milford Federal Bank. Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay. Next, we have considered.
No problem. Thank you for coming.
That was quick. Oh, thank you. Thank you for coming in. It was painless, at least. I would have recognized. I was used for something down further. As a matter of fact, I thought it was for the next one. Okay, next, authorize the Chair to execute the contract with Sherman and Friedrich Land Surveying and Engineering for requests for quotes for professional land surveying for the northerly line of 45 and Shampoo Road. I didn't quite understand what that means.
Okay, yeah, so this is a little bit complicated. Apparently, the town, a while back, used CPC funds to purchase some properties that were part of a tax-taking in a whole larger area up at Long Pond. Fast forward, they used an old survey that had been done a while back for conservation restriction. That old survey had never put boundary markers. Conservation then had signs put up after this purchase, and a neighbor came to me and indicated to me that the signs were on his property. I didn't... There was a lot of debate with town attorneys on, do we just leave them and let him fight it? Do we not? And it just seemed a little inappropriate that somebody who had meets and bounds on a deed going back to 1997 should have to fight to prove that the property was his when we've added the signs post that time. So, all parties agreed that a survey would, a professional survey, and we were very careful that in our quote, we actually asked, in our request for quote, we asked for surveyors who had no prior interaction with anything having to do with that property in the past. So, it's a fresh set of eyes. I am also working with the Army Corps of Engineer on this, because they're very interested, because if the property lines are wrong, it impacts the Army Corps land as well as the turnpike. So, it actually has a, it could be pulling the hem on a skirt. But the reason we're only doing the northern boundary right now is to do the whole property, which frankly, moving forward, anytime we buy a parcel, there should be a survey done ahead, so we don't run into this. But the only reason we're doing the northern right now is funding. I can do that right within, there's a budget line item, I guess, that I have for sort of undesignated funds that I can use. I'm using that portion of that $10,000 that's in that budget, that's sort of discretionary to me, to do that boundary line, because I think it's important we resolve this. And then, we've got it on ARPA to do the full survey of that property, to possibly fund that with ARPA money, because a full survey will be, I think it's going to be like $28,000 or $30,000. There are just no proper boundary markers, and that's going to be expensive. But at least in the short term, I'm asking, we have for this contract and this approval to at least resolve this issue for the neighbor. The signs, by the way, the signs, Conservation did pull the signs down when we brought it forward to them and said, you know, until we resolve this, it stays with the owner, the owner of record right now, as far as he's concerned. So, that's the quick and dirty, a lot of hours of discussion.
In a nutshell.
Yes.
Any comments, thoughts from the Board?
What was the dollar amount? Just doesn't say.
Oh.
On the second page.
I'm sorry.
The bottom, all I see is Jamie here.
Yeah, it's...
The sum of $8,000?
Yeah, it was about, it was $7,500 or $8,000.
The pin is...
On the second page?
Yeah. And it's within that, the funding that I have in that discretionary line. I don't need to do any kind of transfer for it. Yeah, $8,000 plus an allowance, and then iron pins. It would, it would go up a little bit if they have to use iron pins, but I still have the funding if it does go a little bit higher.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion then?
Sure. I move to authorize the Chair to execute the contract with Sherman and Friedrich Land Surveying and Engineering for the request for quotes, professional land surveying for the northerly line of 45 Shampoo Road. Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay, next. To authorize the Chair to execute the contract with the ESS Group in the amount of $75,000 for the alum treatment of South Pond. Anybody have questions on this?
This is fully funded through the grant, $500,000 grant. And we've already expended our match, so at this point, it's just in kind from here forward for the town.
Comments, questions from the Board?
That makes sense to me.
Yep. Now, do you know if the other towns went in?
Do I, excuse me?
The other towns, Brookfield, and there was one other town.
Said East Brookfield.
I don't know. I can check with Becky. I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, I just wanted, because I know when this first came up, not this time, but the first time before, Brookfield was reluctant.
Yeah, and she doesn't... Oh, wait a second. Additional funding is coming from Brookfield, East Brookfield, and the YMCA. Yep, it is.
Okay, thank you.
I will move to authorize the Chair to execute the contract with the ESS Group in the amount of $75,000 for the alum treatment of South Pond.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay. Next, to accept a donation from Cornerstone Bank to the Recreation Department in the amount of $250 towards the cost of the DJ service at the tree lighting event. Any questions or comments from the Board?
That was nice, though.
Yeah.
Yes.
Be a nice addition.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation from Cornerstone Bank to the Recreation Department in the amount of $250 towards the cost of a DJ service for the annual tree lighting event on the Common.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay, next, Common Vicuula application for Deep Roots Distillery USA located at 559 Main Street, Unit 209, Fiskil.
I want to thank Michelle for some yeoman's work on this.
Well, I know apparently they had no clue they needed a Common Vic license, and then going on Facebook, they're advertising food.
And they fall into a very...
We should, I mean, the same thing.
We fall, they fall into a very strange loophole, because they thought they were falling under a porous, like what a brewery could do, a brew house, but they're not. As a distillery, they have a different set of guidelines. So, there's a weird loophole that forces them to have to have the vitaling license.
But do breweries have to if they're serving food?
If they're serving food, but they don't have to. These people actually have to serve food, I believe.
Yeah, because they have.
Because, yeah, so they have to serve food, because they can't just serve the alcohol or a brew house has a different set of guidelines. So, it's just a weird quirk that one doesn't have, but one does.
Distill stuff, it'd just be a bar.
Wait, but you can't.
You can.
No, I know that. But I also thought, like, a brewery, does a brewery have to serve food? Rock Scallion does, I think. They have extensive...
Yeah, yeah, but I'm not sure that they all do. There's some weird loophole with them, but.
You're not required to with the lower ABV. So, if you have a, if you have a wine and beer license only, you can do no food and get away with it. People do, because people love to have food with it.
Right, but you don't have to.
But with the higher ABV stuff, like everybody said, you gotta, you're required to have a food option.
Got it. I forgot we have a resident expert on the board.
There's a man on that.
Passed.
He'll be losing his knowledge.
Yeah, nothing changes in the state very fast, so.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion then to approve the Common Vic license?
I will move to approve the Common Vicuula application for Deep Roots Distillery USA located at 559 Main Street, Unit 209, Fiskil.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay, next, we have a letter from Daniel Gervasi. Says, "This letter is to inform you that I will be retiring from the DPW and giving a two-week notice. My last day will be 10, 21, 22. It has been a great learning experience for me with the total, excuse me, of 18 years employment, and I want to thank the town of Sturbridge for this opportunity. Best regards, Daniel Gervasi." Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I will move to accept the resignation with regret from Daniel Gervasi effective October 21st, 2022, from the Service Department of Public Works, and wish him nothing but health and happiness in his retirement.
Happiness is a happy time.
And I'll second that.
Discussion.
I just also want to add, I think he's an employee that always has a smile on his face.
Yes.
No matter when you see him, right? I mean, he's just got a great attitude, so I echo Jamie's response, and God bless him.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Next, authorize Chair to sign the Public Health Excellence Shared Service Grant.
So, Ken asked me to put this in front of you. It's a regionalization, but it doesn't regionalize anything significant. It opens the door for some regionalized training and whatnot, and he said it's just beneficial for us to partner with them. They do not have any controls, I understand, over any of our policy or anything like that. Our Board of Health still reigns.
Have we ever had this prayer before?
I don't believe so. I think it's new.
Yeah, Charlton got the grant, $300,000 from the Department of Public Health.
And how much is, and we're sharing in that?
Wow. It's basically, yeah, a regionalization that they're going to do, and they're going to use what they have to have, you know, joint training sessions and things like that.
Yeah, it says, "While each town's Board of Health will retain its local authority, this coordinated regional approach will fill gaps, enhance existing services, and expand public health programs." So, it all sounds good, as long as we're not giving up anything or having to pay anything.
I'm all on for that.
That's right. Okay, any other comments? Somebody want to make a motion then?
Sure, I will move to authorize the Chair to sign the Public Health Excellence Shared Services Grant with Charlton, as explained here tonight.
Oh, second that.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay. Accept a letter of resignation from Stephen Chidester from the Conservation Commission. Says, "Mr. Chairman, this serves as my official notice that I am resigning my position as Conservation Commissioner for the town of Sturbridge. I greatly appreciate being able to serve our community and work with people that truly value the mission of conservation. Special thanks to Becky for her very hard work and professionalism." Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I will move to accept a letter of resignation from Steve Chidester from the Conservation Commission with, and extend thanks for all of his hard work.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay. Reappointment of Roy Bishop and Eric Gaspar to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
I will make a motion to reappoint Roy Bishop and Eric Gaspar to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
I'll second.
Okay. We've been trying to clean up appointments, and these two are actually...
They work on the right time schedule, which is why. I did do the reappointment, even though we are still advertising for the new positions, and we've been trying to advertise for all, whether they're reappointments or not. These people had... These people had indicated at the end of June that they did want to be reappointed, and because that commission has so many people sitting there, sort of not officially reappointed, even though technically they can continue, we thought it was wise to just get these two done, and then I have advertised for the vacant positions.
Because I did. Now we're down to.
Right, and that's why I didn't want, yeah. It's so deep. Right, so we've advertised for a little while now. I have some applicants, and as soon as I, I think we're almost at the 15 days or, oh, no, we advertised less, we. Right, because we did not necessarily know when we were first discussing that this of the passing.
Yeah, I just want to say maybe if we can accelerate that, because I did run into the chair, and he indicated by their internal laws, rules, regulations, whatever, that they need three votes, and now it has to be unanimous.
Exactly.
And that's kind of a tough, so if we can move on that, that would be good.
Yeah, maybe we'll relax. I don't think there's anything that says how long we have to advertise. We've been trying to do this fairly, but we might be able to move this one along a little bit because of the nature of it. And I don't want to tie up people's projects going into the winter either with.
Exactly.
If they don't have a quorum, if one person can't make it, now they're really done.
They're kind of in a different situation.
Yeah, I mean, things sort of were unexpected last week, and obviously.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion, all in favor? Okay, accept the letter of resignation from Sue Grandone from the Council on Aging. She said, it is with regret that I am writing all of you of my decision to resign as a COA board member effective immediately. As most of you know, I am relocating to Florida to live near family. It has been a pleasure being part of the COA board. I am so proud of our accomplishments these last several years, and I have no doubt the board will continue these successes in the future. Best regards, Susan Grandone.
Someone very, another very dedicated person for many years, I think.
Yeah, she ran the jewelry thing. She was also on the feasibility study committee.
For the senior center.
Senior center, yeah. Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I will move to accept the letter of resignation from Susan L. Grandone from the Council on Aging Board with regret.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor? Okay, request for transient vendor license for Keith Blakely for the country, for the country folk art shows at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on Friday, November 25th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Saturday, November 26th, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And Sunday, November 27th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Anybody have any questions or comments on the request?
They've done this.
Wait, before.
Make a motion to approve the transient vendor license for Keith Blakely for the country folk art shows at the Sturbridge Host Hotel for Friday, November 25th, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Saturday, November 26th, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And Sunday, November 27th, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
I will, go ahead. Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, request to appoint Paula Copaz to the Sturbridge Lakes Association as the Lead Mine Lake Representative, and she does have a letter in the packet here. You all read it. She's been associated with Lead Mine for, since the 50s. Okay, any comments? Someone want to make a motion then?
Sure, I will move to appoint Paula Copaz to the Sturbridge Lakes Association as a Lead Mine Lake Representative for a term to expire April 18th, 2023.
Second.
Tie. Somebody third.
I fourth. Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, action to reappoint Lee Darren to the Sturbridge Lake Association as the Cedar Lake Representative for a term to expire June 30th, 2025. Any questions, comments? Motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Lee Darren to the Sturbridge Lakes Association as the Cedar Lake Representative for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, reappointment of Marita Tassi to the Sturbridge Lakes Association as the South Pond Representative for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Free good, free good lake representatives.
Yeah, good advocates.
Yeah, good advocates.
Somebody going to make a motion?
Yeah.
He was just waxing poetic about the lakes and.
For one of my compadres to jump in, but he seemed so excited.
I think you're still on, day late, Sam.
I am, yeah. On the spring one, though.
Go ahead.
I will make a motion to reappoint Marita Tassi to the Sturbridge Lakes Association as the South Pond Representative for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Seconded.
Discussion.
Oh, no, not of this, let's vote.
All in favor?
I just, can I just make it? I have just some comments about the Lakes Association. I'm wondering if, like, I've been the board of selection representative on it. I don't know when my term's up. I went the first year, but then, to be honest, I don't really go. I think, I don't know if we should consider, like, altering whether a select person is a voting member on that. I felt like I really don't contribute because it's an advisory board, people who live there.
Is that in the bylaw or the charter?
I really had, I don't, I don't know. Your input is kind of limited.
I think it's in the general bylaws.
I feel like maybe they should just come to us with what kind of advice they want to give us as opposed to having a select person as a voting member. But having put that out there, I don't know if anybody, find out when my term expires, if anybody else would like to take my position on it.
Well, we should look up how it's set up because.
How is it, yeah. It definitely has a rep. But having, I think I took Craig Moran's, and like I said, the first year I would go, but I, honestly, you kind of just sit there because they're discussing lake issues.
Yep.
And we, the board really doesn't have any input unless they want some funding from the board, et cetera, but then they could just come to us. So maybe when you look at it, you might want to see how the board feels about maybe removing that person as a voting member and find out when my term's up. I'm more than happy to, if we don't go that route, if somebody else wants to, thinks they have lake input, you can.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm with you. I think it makes more sense for them to just come to us.
Yeah.
It may require a bylaw change, that's all, I just may have to, and that may be at the same time that I make the bylaw change about the first appointment is up to three years to get everybody to June 30th for the first term of appointment. I could probably just do this whole bylaw change on boards and commissions all at once and then clean it up, so.
It'd be good.
I'll take a look at that.
Any selectmen has to know the other name for South Pond. Blank looks down there.
That's why we have you.
I don't even know what you have.
The real name for South Pond.
Oh, it's, it starts with a Q, right? It's a Q, Quin.
Quacum Quasset.
I know, close enough.
It's not as bad as Wester Lake.
Oh, yeah, that's, okay, last item there.
Every time I drive by, I try.
I think Mary should be the right, because she already has more knowledge about the lakes.
She only barely had more knowledge on that one, really. I just, I know the first two letters.
That's because you know, usually, usually after a Q, there's a U.
Right.
Okay, next one, appointment of Debbie Steinberg to the Council on Aging for a term to expire June 19th, 2025.
I will move to appoint Debbie Steinberg to the Council on Aging for a term to expire June 19th of 2025.
I'll second Jamie's motion and say that it's nice to see somebody new to town trying something.
Yeah, I guess she moved here in 2018.
Yep, that's great.
Great, yep. Did you second that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry. Okay, discussion, all in favor? Okay, next we have old business. Jamie?
I have none.
Mary?
Well, just since we're talking about committees, I'll make a plug for the Special Events Committee. We've been looking for a fifth person. We try to put on a few events every year. We support the farmers market. If you've got some ideas and you want to share and be part of our committee, we're down to four, and we've been at four for several months now.
I'll put another ad out and a post on Facebook again.
I mean, it's a fun committee, you know, I mean.
Yeah, people may have ideas.
And they were always saying they want to bring things to Sturbridge, so here's your chance to be on a committee to, like, formulate some ideas.
Yes.
I don't have any other old business.
Okay, Jase?
I have none.
Ian?
None.
And I have none. New business? Ian?
I do not have any.
Jase?
No, no, thank you.
Mary?
No.
No.
And I have none. Correspondence, we have a letter from Western Regional Transit Authority, and one from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development, and the newsletter from the Community Food Collaborative. Michelle, it's good they're listed, but next time, could you put copies of them in too, because sometimes it's something we might want to discuss on.
I'll try and email them to you.
Yeah, but just to be sure. Email like that gets kind of. Okay, we don't have any minutes, and we have no citizens. So, somebody want to make a motion?
Some moved.
She didn't even get the word. You can fill in anything you want, Michelle, with that one.
Motion to.
Support.
Well, no, let's have some fun with that, Michelle. What did they vote on?
I don't think you want to go too far down that road.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay.